Bring the meeting to order, roll call please.
Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Councilmember Eugenia.
Here.
Councilmember Alparano, not present. Mayor Proton Bern Sworn, here. Mayor Dale.
I'm here, um, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And, uh, Tony, would you be my enforcer?
Yes, sir.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments to the agenda as to closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry to the.
Not that I'm aware of, but the closed session, the council discussed property with, um, real property and gave direction to the city manager regarding price and terms on the item listed in one A. The council also discussed that, um, Dahlia drain item listed as A two and instructions were given to the negotiator regarding terms. There was also one item of anticipated litigation discussed, direction was given and no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that. Need, uh, stronger glasses. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there are no adjustments to the agenda.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I do have one adjustment I would like to make.
Sure.
Um, can we move item E two to the action agenda?
Uh, E two to, okay, where would you want to put that to?
Um, it doesn't, we can put it to the end on the action agenda.
Okay.
I would just like to know a little bit more about it.
Okay, that's fine. I'm gonna ask if it's, uh, number twelve want to make it about a fourteen or eighteen? Okay. Let's, uh, move on to C, public appearances, C one matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address a council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor and at that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to, uh, to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Would somebody like to speak at this time? Come forward, please.
Hello, my name is Charlene Vaye. I'm a resident at twenty seven oh six Meadowbrook Drive, Victoria Terrazas. So I myself, as well as a few members of the audience, are here in regards to our subdivision. Um, on August ninth, we res- everybody on that resides on Saddleback and Meadowbrook Drive received a courtesy notice from the code enforcer, uh, with the code thirteen dash eight point one, obstructing of city right away. Um, according to the county of Imperial Court ordinance, nine, nine zero four zero two point oh seven, a standard driveway should be nine feet in width and twenty feet in length. Accord, I myself measured my driveway, it's only fifteen feet in length. If I include the sidewalk, it is twenty feet in length, so we were shorted five feet. Any size vehicle that you park in our driveway, no matter which house you live on, is gonna be slightly off. Now, we do not have street parking on any side. Um, the sarcasm and the rudeness from the code enforcer telling us that we should have researched before purchasing our homes, park in our, in our, um, garage or park on the side streets. Where are we supposed to park? Are we supposed to park two blocks away? Are we supposed to block on Field Brook, which is about three blocks away? There's nowhere to park. Uh, we were told we were gonna start being cited, we were gonna be ticketed per day if we were to, uh, obstruct the sidewalk, but we're parking in our driveway. At this point, it is a concern of myself, it's a concern of all of us residents that are in Victoria Terrazas because, I mean, if we were shorted five feet from our driveway, how was that even passed by the inspectors? Thank you.
Well, thank you. Ma'am?
Good afternoon, my name's Esther Frias, uh, my address is twenty seven eleven Meadowbrook Drive. Um, she pretty much touched most of the points, um, just the measurements, it's supposed to be twenty feet. We, at least in my contract, I read and it doesn't state that it's fifteen feet. Um, I spoke to some of my neighbors and some of the contracts state that, that our driveway was gonna be fifteen feet, some of them don't. So I spoke to the code, code enforcer and, um, I asked him if the code applies to a normal driveway and he said correct. So, um, I asked him if ours was fifteen feet, how was it that he was still gonna come cite us? And he said that wasn't his problem and that his job was to enforce the law, so I'm just a little concerned about that.
Absolutely. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Don't be shy. If you have something you wanna say, please come forward. This council likes to hear all concerns. Don't look over at him, okay? You gotta get up there.
If I can ask, how many of you are from, uh, the neighborhood, just so we can kinda have a account here? Thank you.
Well, I would like to, to say, first off, I appreciate your candid remarks and I apologize if one of our employees was rude to you. I, I'll, I'll tell you as mayor, I, I don't appreciate that, so if that's the case, I apologize. Um, I can also tell you that we are gonna work diligently and quick, very fast to get this issue taken care of. And I don't want any of you to feel like you're gonna be cited with a, with a fine tomorrow, so please take that from me that that's not gonna happen. So just give us a little bit of time, few days, we're working on it. Othon is gonna make sure that this gets done quickly in a timely manner, so I, I wanna alleviate any worries. Um, and if we don't do something, I want you to come back and get up here and do this, okay? But, um, but that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna come up with some ideas that I think that will work for you folks and same for us too. So, okay, alright.
Okay.
Oh, just quick question, can we ensure that they aren't cited until this investigation is conducted?
Um, yes, um, we're, we're gonna go through the process, look at some options in the meantime, uh, uh, we won't, we won't enforce some of that stuff unless.
Yeah, I, I think if, if anyone does get, get cited con- contact administration and, and talk to us. So we can't do a blanket statement that it's not gonna, you, you have commitment from the, the mayor that we're working on it and what Othon's saying, but if there is, if there happens to be a citation, please immediately get ahold of administration or, or us or Othon.
Uh, I'll go a step further. If you guys have, one of you wanna take this down and then you can share it, I'll give you my cellphone number. And if there's an issue, you give me a call, okay? It's seven six zero, seven nine one, four three one four. I've never ran from anybody and I'm always open, accessible to everyone, so you have a problem, you give me a call, okay? Alright, anybody else like to speak at this time? Okay, then I'm gonna move on to C two, matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand, be acknowledged by the mayor, at that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to take, place, uh, time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. Anybody else like to speak at this time on that one? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to, uh, D, special presentation. Um, Team Makers Summer Intern, internship scholarship presentations. I'm gonna try my best not to butcher this, so please come forward.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Victoria Savios, I am the project coordinator for the Team Makers presentation. And today with me I have present my four teen interns that were hired this summer. Um, with me present, I have Madison Taylor, Amber Moreno, Sammy Couchman and Isabella Gutierrez. And so they're going to do a quick presentation on what they did this summer.
Oh.
So just a quick little background on what the Teen Makers Learn, Play, Create and Cultivate project is. Okay, so the goal of this project is to provide an internship opportunity for teens where they can learn social, emotional and professional skills while providing programming for school age children through Maker Space and gardening programs. And so like I mentioned, this, um, summer, we hired four interns. And if it'll click. Alright, so, um, the four Maker Space interns were hired in June of twenty twenty two and they began creating programs with a budget of five hundred dollars for the whole summer. The project was officially launched on July eleventh, twenty twenty two and the programming was actually so successful that we began offering two sessions per program because we just had such a high demand of families registering. Um, some of the wins that we saw this summer were parents love the programs and the kids really enjoyed participating in them. Um, we made an Instagram reel from one of the very first programs and it actually went viral on the community services page with, um, over twenty one thousand views and over a thousand likes. The Hopeville Tribune published an article highlighting another one of the internships projects and the Imperial Valley Press also published, um, an article with photos from one of our Teen Makers programs. And so like I mentioned, our Teen Makers are Sammy Couchman, Isabella Gutierrez, Amber Moreno and Madison Taylor. And first up, we have Sammy Couchman.
Hi, everyone, uh, my name's Sammy Couchman. Uh, I'm originally from Brawley, but, um, some reasons I applied to this internship include, um, just, i- it served as a way for me to spend this last summer before I go off to college. Um, uh, it served as like a meaningful way to spend the summer and, um, it also would provide me with leadership experience and internship experience that I could use in the future um, to apply for more, um, uh, internships and jobs or possible careers. Uh, my programs that I did were the paper airplane workshop and the race car workshop. Um, the paper airplane, uh, workshop, I, uh, I had kits for the kids to create their own airplane and I showed them how to do it. And I set up rings around the library and, uh, they were able to complete an obstacle course. And once they completed the obstacle course, they got their very, very own, uh, pilot hat or, uh, pin. Uh, the race car workshop, I, uh, set out a bunch of, uh, wooden pieces for the kids to make their own race car with glue and they, they got to paint them when they were done and they got to take them home, so those are my programs. Uh, on the left, uh, the two left pictures, um, show the kids with their, uh, pilot hats that they got for completing their obstacle course as well as a, a little foam glider that they got to make. And on the right, uh, I, it shows the kids making their own race cars with, um, paints and I was showing them how to do it. So yeah, that was my present, that was, those were my programs, thank you.
Sammy, is that your grandpa back there in the back?
Yeah, that's, that's.
I, I, I'm blind as a bat, I had my glasses down, I thought that was Mr. Couchman back there.
We have two, we have two mayors in the building, so.
Oh, that's right. He's so, he's visiting God's country.
Up next, we have Isabella Gutierrez.
Hello, my name is Isabella Gutierrez and I was one of the interns that applied for this internship. The reason why I decided to join this internship is because I wanted to keep myself busy this summer and help give back to my community and in a creative way. So the first internship that I created was something called Clay Crafts where the children both worked with two different types of clay, polymer clay and air dry clay. Uh, they worked with two different types of clay and they felt the materials and textures of two different types of clay and got to make, um, anything of their creation, little figurines, little octopuses, anything they would like. The difference with the polymer clay is that it was easy to bake and that they could take it home with them all finished. The air dry clay was dries overnight for twenty four hours, so they could take home the project and continue it and add water to mold more and paint over it if they would like to continue. So it's something that the children can continue at home and keep themselves busy over the summer. The next program that I designed was fabric painting. It's a simple idea. I, I bought tote bags, white, simple tote bags for the kids and some fabric paints and brushes for the kids to paint and create anything. I have provided some examples of some creations that I made for the kids and showed them and they got to make their own little tote bags and design their own little handbags that they could bring around or wear whenever they go out. So that's my programs. And you see on the right is, on the top right is the clay programs, the top. And then on the bottom is the fabric painting that we did. And that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Isabella, and then next up, we have Amber Moreno.
Um, hi, good afternoon, my name is Amber Moreno and the reason I joined this internship was because when I grew up, I wanna be a teacher and I thought this was gonna be a very helpful way to learn like dr- real jo- job skills. And I want to have fun this summer and make a positive impact on the community. The programs I made were the Neon Craft Party and the Slime Manium one. For the Neon Craft Party one, the kids got to do, uh, glow in the dark lantern as well as a lava lamp that glows in, glows in the dark. And I think the kids really enjoyed it because they got to be creative on how they decorated it and they got to learn a little bit of the science behind the lava lamp. And for the Slime Manium one, um, I think they really had fun because it was slime and when I was little, I always wanted to make slime, so I, it was, it was fun to see them make their own slimes, although it got a little bit messy, but it was fun to see them have fun and be creative and to see them happy. On the left side, you can see the glow in the dark proj- project where they were making the lava lamp as well as doing their, the lanterns. And on the left side, you can see the slime project that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, and next up, we have Madison Taylor.
Hi, my name is Madison Taylor, um, I applied for this internship because I thought it was a great way to gain experience and give back to my community. I figured I would be able to, um, give back to my community also while being busy this summer. So I was able to make a lot of kids smile and that made me really happy. Um, two programs that I did were the dry ice experiments and the raised salt paintings. Um, the dry ice experiment is where kids were able to participate in hands-on learning while experiencing the properties of dry ice. So I tried to base this project more on the whimsical science part of it, hopefully opening the eyes to a lot of kids, cuz I personally love science. And they also got to take many things home. For example, um, one of the driest experiments were, was a balloon. They would fill up a balloon with dry ice, put some colored dye in there and the balloon would expand on its own. So they got to take on their own balloons, decorate them, and they even saw bottle rockets that ended up staining the ceiling, so we did. But it was fun, it was all fun. Um, the second, uh, program that we did was the raised salt paintings. Um, kids got the opportunity to express their creative side by working with paint and glue to create a beautiful crystallized design and drawing of their own choice. So it was really awesome to see that kids were able to express the creative side and it kinda made me realize how kids think by seeing what they would draw. And they seemed so focused on it and seemed so happy once they finished their drawing and they were like, yes, it looks perfect. So I was really hap- really happy to see them all smiles. Um, you can see that on the top two pictures is the raised salt painting program. So they're able to create all their designs and they love seeing all the different colors, there are neon colors, dark colors, so they got to choose all whatever they wanted. And the bottom two were the dry ice experiments, the kids especially love those because of, like I said, the whimsical part of it. And I'm really happy that they were able to experience science in a whole new way and not just some boring thing you learned at school, but something to open their eyes on why science is really fun. And those are the programs I did, thank you.
Alright, thank you to all of our interns and I didn't mention this at the beginning, but, um, because these interns completed, um, all these programs this summer, they actually received a five hundred dollar scholarship, which they are going to get today. Um, so I don't know how we're gonna proceed.
Okay, well, first off, I, that, we have another dignitary here tonight, uh, Rachel Blackwood, which is our vice president of Imperial Library Board, is also here tonight too, so we've got a lot of people here tonight. So you guys don't move, cuz I'm coming up there and we're gonna talk a little.
First of all, I'm very proud of all of you for this reason. I remember forty-five years ago, I'm dating myself, but I had, I had a high schooler that, uh, taught us football plays, different things like that, and it took the time to do it. Um, they were high schoolers at that time. Um, but I remember, guy's name was Daryl Bisi, it always stayed with me forever and the impact that you've made with these children are huge, cuz I'll never forget it. And that's a huge thing, you, you don't think of it being young right now, but the impact that you've made with these kids are huge. The other thing I like seeing is you're not these kids that sit at home playing the games, no offense, if there's any out. I used to put my foot up my son's butt, you know, play those things all the time, that's not good for you. But, uh, I'm very proud of you, this is a neat deal and I, and I'm sure you enjoyed it too as well, so that's a good thing. We're about to sustain it, I gotta check that out. I would have done it too, but probably. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read one and then I'm just gonna bring it, just to present you after that, cuz I can read it fourteen times and I used to do those whereas, it's most things get to be a pain. But anyway, we'll go on through this, okay? This, uh, the certificate of, uh, internship, this certificate is presented in rec- in recognition of your completion of the Imperial Public Library Teen Makers. Learn, play, create and cultivate internship. Your hard work, dedication and responsibility during your service from June twentieth to August twelfth, two thousand twenty-two has earned you internship, intern scholarship of five hundred dollars. This project was supported in whole or in part by funding provided by the state of California administered by the California State Library. So Sammy, good job, you did a fantastic job. I was gonna take off my glasses, I look better, better looking. Okay, Isabella, count four. Kinda look like Brad Pitt when I take them off. Okay, Amber, okay, right here, congratulations, good job. So did any of you have any, you know, really cool kids that you had? Congratulations. Same round of applause. Get them all over. How many did you guys see in half a yard? You all right?
One, two, three. Just, yeah. I'm gonna put two on. Okay, okay. One, two.
All good?
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to, um, E consent agenda. All items, all items under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council by one motion without discussion. Should any council member or, or other persons request any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at that time and is determined by the mayor.
Like to make a motion to approve E one?
Second?
I have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, um, move to E one, approval of the city council meeting minutes for August third, two thousand twenty-two. What in the world is going on here?
Amber, we pulled E two.
And we took E two to the end.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, it's approved.
Write that right now. E two.
You're still thinking about that money.
Yes, I was, I was thinking some, some rula.
Jeff wants a big check for his room.
Yeah, I want that for my, my truck. Okay, F one, uh, bid two thousand twenty-two dash oh five Clearwell Pump Station Replacement and GAC Treatment Expansion of Filter Piping and Replacement Project.
About the bid?
We received three bids on the project, um, the bids are as follows.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, alright, that was it. Um, anyway, bids are as follows, uh, Pyramid Building and Engineering, six million sixty thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars. Pacific Hydrotech Corporation with six million seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. And Orin Construction Corporation with seven million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we recommend awarding it to building, uh, to Pyramid Building and Engineers for the six million sixty thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars. We are asking for a ten percent contingency. Uh, the reason for the contingency at that dollar value is because this is in the older part of the yard and we're not, we've given them everything that we know that's underground, but we're sure there's things underground that we're not going to know about because, um, it's kinda back in the back where it's been open but built on in the past. Um, we're comfortable with pyramid builders, they are the ones that put in the original GAC filters, the, the four that are there now. They got the contract, uh, to put those in, their work was a, of satisfactory at the last time. We assume no reason it won't move forward and be the same this time. If you have questions, I'll take them.
Questions or comments? Wow, six million, that's, that's.
Things have gone up drastically.
Yeah, it has, because I can remember when I got on this council, I'm real, is, I'm dating myself, I think we had an eight million dollar total budget for the city.
Yeah.
This is crazy, okay, um.
And this money will come out of the, what's left of the water bond and, uh, the balance will become out of capacity funds and there's sufficient money in capacities to carry it through.
Alright, do I have a motion?
Make motion to approve.
Second?
A motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, moving on to F two, approval of the School Resources Officer Agreement.
County Mayor and, uh, City Council, uh, Imperial Police Department is requesting approval between the City of Imperial and Imperial Unified School District for the SRO contract for the school year of twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, and I'll snap for any questions.
Questions or comments?
So, um, with the School Resource Officer, are this, this school only requesting one? Or if we have an additional one, how would that, how would that process look?
Right now, we just, they were just requesting one, that would have to be negotiated between this, the school and the city for addition, any additional officers or school reso- officers that they, they wanted to get in contact with.
Where do they up? Where do they obtain the funding for the school resource officer? Is it in their budgets or how does that work?
It's in their budget through wherever their funding comes from, uh, grants or uh, this uh, safety.
Somewhere I guess is what I'm throwing out there is if they want a second one, they have to come forward with it. So it's, we're not the holdup or.
Yes, uh, we would want, we would wanna work with the, with the school at that, but again.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's at the school and it's for their s- their, their safety. We're willing to help out as much as possible. I'm talking about the police department with anything extra, but as of right now, it, it has to go through the school because of our, our budget too.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this a reimbursement of the fund? So do, or do they give us money up funds or do we bill them? How does that work?
I believe we bill them.
Uh, yes, so, so we do based on the time sheets and amount of time worked. So there's the regular pay for the certain amount of the school year, including summer school. Um, that's billed on a, on a regular basis as we have the time sheets. And then anything in addition to that of overtime, et cetera, then that's filled out as well for the, for whatever assignment our S R O has with the school district.
I make motion approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, moving along to F three. Um, C P R S California Statewide Education and Funding Initiative Grant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, staff has identified an opportunity to apply for the California Statewide Education and Funding Initiative Grant. Through C P R S. The grant matches fifty percent of project costs towards inclusive play equipment designs. Staff is seeking city council's approval to submit an application for future park improvements for uh, Deputy Anthony Redondo Memorial Park. Formerly known as Sky Ranch Park. And I'll stand for any questions. Questions or comments?
Make a m- motion approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero.
Hey, uh, F four Savannah Ranch Park Improvements.
Mayor, members of the council, it's me again. Staff has concluded community outreach efforts for proposed park improvements in Savannah Ranch Park. Residents within the subdivision were presented with three design options. Out of a hundred and sev- seven surveys, we received sixty percent voted for option two. Staff would like city council's approve, approval to begin the competitive bid process. And I'll stand for any question. And you'll see as part of your packet, uh, the, the survey pie chart and as well as the design that they chose for option two. So they were, uh, um, all three options were a variation of fitness equipment, um. That had different components in it. Uh, option two includes, uh, both, uh. Stationery equipment, um. Cardio equipment and also swinging components for like, uh, feel like a CrossFit. Or that type of, of, of exercising and as well as shading for both, both of the areas.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, F five memorandum of understanding between the City of Imperial and the City of El Central for the Cal Fire. Ivy Urban Forest Tree Grant.
To mayor, members of the council, staff request city council's approver, approval to enter into this agreement. With City of El Central, the agreement ensures that the City of Imperial receives eighty-five trees as part of Cal Fire Ivy Urban Forest Grant. All trees received and labor for planting will be funded by this grant. And I'll, and you'll see the attached maps on your packet. And I'll stand for any questions.
How many total trees is it for?
Eighty-five. So I believe there was five hundred trees that were, uh, in the final round to be distributed around the five, five cities. So based on population size, we got, we were a lot of eighty-five.
Were those tree?
Yes, so we're gonna be planting most of those trees on the Aiden Road right aways, uh, on the south side. Uh, as you may or not remember, we're phasing that in for improvements. So this would be, uh. We're getting trees. So that part, that component of the improvements would be taken care of by this grant. So we'll save money there and then as well as a few other parks that are gonna get, uh, uh, trees, uh, one of them being Eager. Uh, Sunset, Savannah Ranch and a few others.
Only do we have a choice on the tree?
Yes.
Because those desert rosewoods stay green year round. They're beautiful trees. We just don't need any of those trees like what we had over on Cannon that looked dead.
No, so.
Nine months out of the year.
The, the Arizona, the, the Arizona at Rosewood is. The, on the list of species they provide, there's a five or six trees, uh, species list that they give us to choose from. That's always option number one, just because it's real tolerant to the, to our soil conditions here and it's, it's an evergreen and it's very minimal on maintenance. So. Um, those doors my first choice. And then if they don't have those or if they're limited on availability, then we'll, we'll go from there.
Well, just ask them if they'll give us a warranty and they can give us all the junk trees and then they can just give us eighty more.
Right, yeah.
I'm at Lowe's.
Exactly.
Do we have any trees left for the bike path?
Not, not as part of this grant, but uh. The, those trees there are, are interesting too, that the wind, every time the wind blows, those are halfway bent over. So we're having our.
A lot of maintenance.
Yeah.
Just because they're so heavy.
I always ask Dennis if he rides on that bike path. He says, no, there's not enough shade, so.
You, you know, there was a, a company. Probably ten or twelve years ago, a friend of mine, she got involved with it. And I saw the design and I don't know if they still make something similar to this. But it's a reusable, um, stand for a tree. And it doesn't matter how hard the wind blows, it continuously keeps the tree straight. And at that time, it was like thirty dollars a unit. But my gosh, yeah, it's, it's, it's an expense upfront, but it's something you can continually use as you put trees up. And it just kinda died on the vine and. She took me to different places in San Diego where they had used them till they finally got up to a certain point where you can take them off. And all the street, all, every tree was just straight as a needle. And I don't know if they've still got them. I might try to find her or get ahold of her, but that's something that. Just for you to let you look at it, it's just something interesting.
Whether we can find them still for thirty-five dollars, uh.
With, with COVID, they're probably eight hundred and ninety bucks a piece. I mean, everybody's ripping everybody off right now, so. Okay, any other comments, questions?
Make a motion approve.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. In today's world, I swear, if it's anything you sell, they've jacked it up by five times just because it's, it's pretty bad. Okay.
Passes four zero.
We're gonna move to E two now, um. And that was on the approval of the twenty twenty Stone Garden Memorandum of Understanding.
Um, so I just had a question because it was dated twenty twenty. So is this an extension of the contract?
No, so, uh, the, the feds on this grant, they're two years back for every, every, uh, every grant year. So next year will be twenty twenty-one.
Okay, and so can you explain a little bit like what the grant is for?
So the grant is used for, to cover overtime for our officers, um, and we assist border patrol in covering areas that they can't. Um, and helping to, uh, stop the flow of narcotics through, through our area. Um, a lot of times they can't be on, out on one eleven on the roads. So they're caught up on, out in the desert on the wall. So we're, we're kind of fil-. Bridging those gaps and helping them out.
That was just my. Like it's twenty twenty.
Yeah, it's, you could thank the feds for that.
I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero.
That explains where we see different. Different police departments throughout the valley might be in different locations in the valley at certain times. And that's probably part of the Stone Garden program that.
That's one of the main questions we, we get. And I'm sure other departments here in the valley get that same, get those same phone calls from people. Asking why they see El Central Police Department in Brawley or Imperial Police. In uh, El Central, you know, vice versa. But, and this is why this kinda expands our, our horizons and. Border Patrol kinda puts us out there and they kinda push for us to go into these, uh, areas that obviously they're not gonna be able to cover. So yeah, that's why.
I kinda wanted to bring that up because I had somebody, uh, just riding with me up to Hemet one time and, and I saw an El Central.
Yeah.
Unit clear out on, on eighty-six. And so of course I just stirring up trouble. I said, well, well, they're just building their revenues up over there on eighty-six. I knew kinda what it was, but I just wanted to make sure our residents know what it is.
Right.
They have an idea.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect to put out there. So that kinda answers a question for a lot of people.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's been real, um. We're gonna, the meeting of the city council is adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, September seventh, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M.